Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and I would like to call the Mashpee Public Schools Business Meeting of May 15th, 2024 to order. We're starting a little later tonight because we had a wonderful opening, but our first order of the exhibit outside, which we'll talk about, I'm sure, at some point. But our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic, liberty, justice, and the Constitution of this nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution, and the Constitution of all. The Mashpee Public Schools recognizes and honors the many generations of Wampanoag people who live and have been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Okay. Our next item is to ratify the agenda of May 15th, which we have before us. I know there was a question about the executive session. Um, Don, did you want to speak to that? Well, I guess I'll entertain a motion first to ratify and take a second, then we can open it up for discussion, please.
Make a motion to ratify the agenda of May 15th, 2024.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second.
Kelly. All right. So, open it up for discussion.
I'm just questioning if there is a need to have an executive session, but I guess that will be determined.
Item seven is the update.
Yeah. Depending upon item, well, related to item seven, which has a vote associated with it too, so.
Else.
So, I'm not sure what the overlap is. I'm fine with leaving it on there and if it's not necessary, or deemed not necessary, make it always.
All right. Anybody else have any comments on that item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Dan, who is joining us by Zoom?
Hello, yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Next item is the school committee reorganization, which includes the appointment of officers, subcommittee assignments, and liaison assignments. We were all emailed a position interest chart, which we have. We'll start with the officers. So, the first page here, it shows, we all put in what we were interested in. So, I guess we can start with, should we start from the bottom or work up? Start with chair? How do we want to do this?
So, Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept the position interest chart that has been submitted for consideration.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
Hello, yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay. That being said, um, Don, I'll defer to you because I kind of filled in all just from the off chance that they weren't filled in. So, we'll let you go first, if you want to.
Yeah, so, I was interested in being the chair for this coming year, a couple of reasons, but the primary is we are going to be going through the process of searching for a new superintendent and having gone through that process in the past, it's a very challenging and complicated process that we need to make sure that we do right, which I think we did pretty good the last time around with Superintendent DeBoer, and I'm hopeful that the committee will come to a similar decision with whoever in the future Superintendent will be for Mashpee Public Schools. But, you know, it's a very strenuous process that we have to go through, but it's a process where we need to be open and transparent to the public so that they're aware of what we're thinking about, what we're considering. They'll have opportunity, obviously, to participate and also allow the candidates to be able to express their backgrounds for consideration as part of that process. So, I think that was one of the real reasons why I was interested in being chair again after, what, 10 years?
I was trying to go back and remember where you were last chair.
2000 something.
I think the Zoom people are having trouble hearing me, but I think we've got Dan here. Dan, is that better?
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Don. Again, I appreciate that. Again, I was just kind of going with consistency, didn't know if anyone with all the changes going on, I just threw my hat in, but if the board is, you know, if the committee's comfortable with Don stepping up, having gone through this, you know, my thought was just, we've got so many changes going on, we work well as a committee, but I trust Don would lead us through the right path, so I guess I will withdraw as chair. So. Yes. So, that being said, and with this, I guess you would just vote the name of the person that you are interested in having as chair, correct? Because it's really, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
Hello, Don.
Kelly?
Don.
Brian?
Don.
And I also, uh, Don? Sorry.
Don.
I also vote Don. So, there you go. All right. Mine is yours now.
Thank you. And so, let's move on to Vice Chair. Looks like we have two individuals who expressed interest in being Vice Chair. Is that better? Okay. I feel like if, it's not going to bite me, right? Okay. For Vice Chair, we had Brian Whedon and Kathy Lewis. Either one have anything that they want to say? Start with Brian.
In the spirit of unity, I'd like to withdraw my nomination. I think Kathy was a great chair and should be a great Vice Chair, and I'm fine with settling for Secretary.
Thank you.
All right. With that, Kathy, unless you have anything to say, or want to say, then we can go ahead and do.
I'm good. Thank you for that, Brian. I appreciate that.
All right. I guess we'll start with Dan.
Hello, Kathy.
Brian?
Kathy.
Kelly?
Kathy.
Kathy?
I'll stand.
And I'll vote for Kathy, so. Four for one abstention. All right. Next is for Secretary. So.
I will withdraw. Obviously, I was just, you can't do both.
You can't do both. So, Brian? You're still comfortable with that, right?
Yes.
All right. Anyone, oh, okay. Seeing that there's no other candidates for that position, let's, we'll go ahead and vote. Dan?
He put his thumb up.
Brian? Okay. Kelly?
Brian.
Kathy?
Brian.
I will vote for Brian. And then, Brian, are you?
I'll stand.
Standing?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure what the none is.
Means they weren't interested in you.
Okay. All right. We now have this slate of candidates. Don Myers is Chair, Kathy Lewis is Vice Chair, Brian Whedon as Secretary for the FY '25 school year. Next item is in regard to the committees and liaison and working group positions. So, for curriculum, negotiations, policy, and superintendent evaluation, we needed two individuals to be primary, and then hopefully we will have at least one alternate. All right. So, for curriculum, looks like we have, everyone wanted to be an alternate.
Mr. Chair, I'll change mine to primary.
Primary for Kathy? Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll change minds as well.
Brian? All right. Is anyone else that I, Dan or Kelly?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Both of you are interested in being alternates?
Yes.
Dan as an alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have two alternates? Oh, you're doing three. I know, but you only need one.
We really only need one alternate. So, I will withdraw myself as being an alternate. Kelly?
I'll withdraw myself, too.
Okay. So, Dan, that'll leave you as the alternate on the curriculum. For negotiations, we needed two. We have Brian and myself as primary. We need one alternate. We have Kathy and Dan have expressed an interest.
I was going to say the same.
It was up to you, Dan. I was going to defer to you. Is there one you want more than the other?
I would want to be primary, but I don't want to.
Doesn't matter to me.
I'm fine backing off, too. I'm leaving Dan as the alternate. That's fine with me.
All right. So, we have myself and Brian as primary and Dan as the alternate.
I mean, did Dan want to be a primary?
Dan, do you want to be a primary?
No, I'm not really the alternate. I'm the one who wants to be.
Okay. What do we have coming up?
Unit C.
Unit C. Okay.
And I cannot do Unit C.
And you can't do it.
Correct.
Yeah. Next, Subcommittee is policy, and we had three people express an interest as primary and two as alternates. So, Kathy, Kelly, and Brian, is there one of you that would rather be an alternate versus a primary?
Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw.
I was going to say, I would withdraw to be a, to remain primary on superintendent eval, but it's, I'm fine either way.
Doesn't matter. I'm fine.
I've been on policy pretty much through my entire tenure. I do, I am a policy nerd, so I do enjoy policy, but I'm willing to let somebody else step into that for a bit, so I'm fine with that.
All right. So, then that would be Kelly and Brian is the primary on policy. I'll withdraw myself as alternate. So, Dan, you would be an alternate on that.
So, what do we have, Don?
Superintendent Evaluation, then. We had three primaries, Kathy, Kelly, and Brian. Oh, four.
Dan and Brian.
Dan, I'm sorry. Dan was, Brian.
I'll withdraw my primary and go to an alternate.
You're going to go to an alternate?
Yeah.
And that also gives Dan at least one primary seat?
Yeah. That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my alternate for Kelly.
Okay. All right. So, let's just make sure we got this right, then. Curriculum, primary will be Kathy and Brian, alternate will be Dan. Negotiations, Brian and myself will be primary, Dan will be the alternate. Policy, we have Brian and Kelly as the primary, Dan as the alternate. Superintendent Evaluation, we've got Kathy and Dan as primaries, and Kelly will be the alternate.
That's what I got.
Everyone understanding?
Yeah.
Next is liaison positions. First one is the Mashpee Board of Selectmen. Historically, the Chair has been the primary for that.
We did mix it up last year, though, the Vice Chair was, but I'm kind of drawing my primary, just pointing that out for historical sake.
We have last year's for your reference.
We did mix it up a little last year.
Well, and I'm willing to mix it up again if you want.
I'm fine if you want to mix it up. It's, it's, it's fine with me. I will withdraw my primary.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to withdraw my alternate.
Dan? Okay. So, Brian?
As mine.
Well, no, you got.
Kathy, do you want to do the alternate?
Sure.
Okay. So, we'll have Don as the primary and Kathy as the alternate. All right. Then the Cape Cod Collaborative Board. So, we have a bunch of alternates and no primary. Kathy, Kelly, Dan.
And this one requires the additional training, correct?
This will require about eight hours of training so that you understand how the collaborative board operates and your fiduciary responsibility for them. And then you also have one meeting a month on a Wednesday. Fortunately, since COVID, that meeting has been a Zoom call, so you don't have to go And I'm trying to remember, Matt did that last year.
Yeah.
Have you done it, Kathy?
I have not.
You have not.
If no one else, I mean, I'm sure not to, just because I already have two nights a week I'm at meetings, but if no one else is able to, I can step up.
I mean, I think it would be a good experience for someone to kind of see how the collaborative operates.
All right. I'll, I'll do it. No one else. What were you going to say, Dan? Sorry.
I was just going to say with my cadence of other meetings, it makes it very challenging to duplicate that. So, I'll go there.
All right.
Right.
No interest, Kelly?
You know what? I'll try.
You're going to try?
I'll try. Why not?
That's all we, that's all we can ask.
All right. I'll try.
You okay with that?
Can you go with that, Kathy?
I'm totally fine with that. Yeah. I mean, it's a great group, and I appreciate the work they do. There's nothing about that. It's just time-wise, like.
Right.
All right. We do need an alternate, so we've got Kathy, you listed as an alternate, Dan and Brian. So, we need one, one alternate.
I'll withdraw as an alternate.
Brian's, take his name off that. Okay.
I'll go in as an alternate on that.
You okay with that, Dan?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Finance Committee?
It's Brian.
Brian?
There you go, Brian.
Okay. And then we need one alternate.
I'm going to remove myself as an alternate.
Okay. Kathy, we'll take her name off. Dan, do you want to be an alternate on the Finance Committee?
I could be an alternate.
Okay. So, you as an alternate. And I will withdraw.
Kathy?
I will withdraw as well.
Planning and Construction. Kathy has listed herself as the primary, and if someone else wants that, I will.
I will withdraw my, my alternate.
Okay. So, you're going to withdraw. Okay. So, Brian, can you be the alternate on that?
Sure.
Sick Bank. So, this does meet somewhat frequently, but the meetings are usually in the afternoon, right after school, and they are very short.
Zoom, and they're all Zoom now.
Are they all Zoom now, too? Okay. So, Dan and Brian have expressed interest as primaries?
Final withdrawing. I'm giving it to Dan.
Brian, you're going to withdraw?
Yes, please.
Okay. You still good? Dan as a primary? Yep?
Yes.
Okay. Then we need one alternate.
I will withdraw my alternate on that one.
I will, too. So, Kelly, can you handle that?
Sure.
Okay.
Just to add, if it's a sick bank involving Unit C and the alternate has to step forward, that could be glitchy. So, can there be just one if it's a Unit C and Dan can't do it? Like an alternate alternate?
I can be the, unless Dan wants to be the alternate alternate, I can be the alternate alternate.
Well, Dan's the primary.
Oh, he's the primary. Then I can be the alternate alternate.
Okay. So, we have two.
Just if it's Unit C.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. And then Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, Kelly, you had expressed an interest.
Yep.
And that does, just so you know, Kelly, the partner, that involves the, the partnership meeting that meets quarterly.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's like a four o'clock meeting. Four fifteen to five fifteen.
Okay.
The next one's in early June. We only do it four times a year.
I think you want to be the alternate. I think so.
I have two, three alternates, so if you want a second one, you can have it. I mean, I've done, that's another one I've done for a few years now. Not that I don't enjoy it. I enjoy that one greatly, but I'm willing to, again, let someone else. Totally your call, though.
Perfect. You're a member.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. All right. Just review this one to make sure we've got it correct.
Don, before you review it.
Yes.
Would you be possibly able to do the alternate for Sick Bank? You only have one primary.
You only need one primary?
But he has no alternates?
Yes.
You only need one?
You and me are alternates on that one.
Well, I think she was suggesting.
No, him take the Sick Bank from me, only because there's going to be the case where there's going to be the, the conflict.
Then you wouldn't need me at all.
Okay.
Then you don't need, yeah. Okay. So, no, okay. Alternate is Don.
Thank you.
Nope, that's fine.
Yeah. That's a good suggestion.
Yep.
Don, you're not primary. Oh, you're only, you're primary on the Sick Bank.
Yeah. Okay. So, on the Select Board, I will, I am the, Don is the primary and Kathy is the alternate. The Collaborative, I've got Kelly as the primary and Kathy as the alternate. Please speak up if I have this wrong. Finance Committee, I've got Brian as the primary and Dan as the alternate. Mashpee Planning and Construction, we've got Kathy as the primary, Brian as the alternate. Sick Bank, we've got Dan as the primary and Don as the alternate. And Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, we've got Kelly as the primary and Dan as the alternate. Is that?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Last but not least, working groups. All right. So, finance, so we need two representatives for each of these. So, Finance Group.
I'll withdraw my primary on that.
All right. So, that would have Kelly and Don as primaries. We need one alternate, either Dan or Brian.
Final withdrawing as an alternate.
All right. So, that would be Dan as the alternate. All right. Outreach and Engagement. So, we have one primary and we have three alternates. Do you want to be, okay, Dan?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Then we need one alternate, either Kelly or.
I will remove myself as an alternate.
I was going to offer to remove, because that's a good one to be on if you want.
Well, I'm looking at what I have above, and I'm, right now I got three primaries, four pri.
But the liaison, though, you don't, those aren't necessarily, the working groups are going to meet more than your liaison meetings.
Okay.
Unless you want to go to all of those meetings, but they're not as required, like the working groups are more, I don't want to say important, but.
All right. I'll stay as the alternate, then. Thank you, Kathy.
This has to do a lot with the opinions of.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, Kathy, you removed yourself?
Yes.
On that one? Okay. Next is Efficiency and Effectiveness. So, Brian expressed interest as a primary, and then Kelly and Dan and Kathy expressed interest as alternates.
I'm going to remove myself as an alternate.
If, Dan, do you want to be primary or you want to stay alternate on that one?
I would prefer to be alternate.
All right. Then I'll go move to primary on that one.
Yeah. All right. And then the last one on the list is Plan for Success. And we have Kathy as primary, Brian as a primary, and, oh, Kelly and Dan as alternates. I'm just looking here.
Did I lose the alternate?
Unless you want to be primary on it. Tom?
I'm just, I was just looking at, so Brian, you were primary on Outreach, Efficiency, and Effectiveness, and you'd be okay with this one, Bill?
Yes. That's fine.
Okay. All right. So, then go with Plan for Success. Brian and Kathy with Kelly as the alternate. All right. Last is the Legislative Representative. So, Kathy, you had expressed interest, I had expressed interest, and Brian had. Spirit of being open to change, I'll withdraw my name.
Oh, withdraw mines as well.
Okay.
There you go, Kathy.
All right.
So, Kathy, we get it.
All right.
All right. So, let's just quickly review the working groups. So, Finance, primaries is Don and Kelly with Dan as the alternate. Outreach is Dan and Brian with Kelly as the alternate. Efficiency and Effectiveness is Brian and Kathy with Dan as the alternate. And Plan for Success is Brian and Kathy with Kelly as the alternate. Legislative Representative is Kathy.
Correct.
All right? So, I just want to give a motion that we accept all the assignments as, as submitted.
Some of them.
Yeah, sorry.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes to, so it's unanimous. All right, congratulations, everyone. Next item of business is Public Comment. Anyone sign up?
No.
Nope. Not yet. Okay. Moving on then, next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes from May 1st, 2024, copies of which are in your packet.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Dan and a second by Kelly. Any discussion? Hearing none? Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And yes also. So it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is the Report of the Superintendent. I'll turn it over to Superintendent DeBoer.
So my report is very short. There is one recognition and acknowledgement we would like to do this evening. And then just to point everyone's attention to the list of upcoming events that are in the packet, and then two very important events in terms of our senior class, is the Walk of Honor, which will be Friday, May 31st. That is a morning experience for our graduates and the students at all the other schools. And then graduation is the next day on Saturday at 10:00 in the morning, and School Committee is asked to arrive at 9:30. So the one recognition that we have this evening is for Andrew Kelly. And Andrew has been an outstanding student, a Chair of the Student Advisory Committee, a very valued member of this committee, and so appreciative of the student voice that he brings to the table. He is an intelligent, fun individual who sort of brightens the meetings definitely, for sure, no offense to the other members here. But I just want to express my gratitude to Andrew, and I don't know if the committee members would like to say anything.
Mr. Chair, may I? Andrew, thank you for leading this group. This was like something I've been working on for two years, to get this group together and to have a Chair, our first Chair, be someone as engaged and interested in the work and willing to learn and take this on to help ensure that this committee remains a voice for the students in terms of policy, budget, and all the other things that you've seen us talk about over the last year. I couldn't be happier. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership, setting an example for your fellow students, and bringing that voice to this table for discussion. So sincerely, thank you, and best of luck for everything in your future, because it's going to be bright.
Brian, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Andrew, for being a role model. And I think you exemplify what, you know, a good citizen is, an engaged citizen, helping out with the conservation, commissioning departments, all the things that you're doing around the water, the environment, you know, showing up to town meeting after your games to help out, exercise your rights. I'm really proud of you and look forward to watching you in your career and wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Dan, do you have anything that you want to say?
I do, I just wanted to reiterate what Kathy and Brian have said, and really just pin down the fact that it takes a lot of courage to be in a meeting like this, especially from first, and you've done it with such grace and humility, and it's been truly a privilege to sit down and see you, congratulations, you're helping support, seeing your future blossom, it's okay to permit it.
Thank you.
I'm brand new, so I haven't been able to serve on this committee with you, but I sat in that chair over there at the last School Committee meeting and watched you stand up and stand up for what you believe in. Continue to do that, because you are going to shine. Don't ever forget about your voice, because the people want to hear it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Andrew, I just want to say that I'm very proud to have worked with you. You got an insight into what this committee does or doesn't do, and we have valued your input to this process. It's amazing that we continue the lineage of getting excellent student representatives to this committee, and you continue to set the bar high. I have high expectations for your future and can't wait for you to come back and tell us how you have succeeded, and we are indebted to everything that you've contributed to this group, so thank you again.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you all for all the lessons that you've taught me and your respect and real value of what I have to say, even if it's not what you want to hear. I really appreciate you all taking what I say as the student voice, and I am very pleasured to be passing it off to Eve Man, and I know she's going to do a wonderful job next year. And thank you very much, your words mean a whole lot to me. Thank you.
And I just. I, I do just want to add, in terms of Andrew as the human being and the talented student that he is, that he is academically outstanding, he is an athlete, and he really is a fabulous musician, and if you were able to go to the concert on Monday night, you would have seen his skill set at multiple instruments, and I don't even think he played the one that he is most highly skilled at, because he's good at everything. But anyway, we will greatly miss your performances in the area of music and sports and in the classroom, so thank you. On behalf of the School Committee, we have a little something for you.
We have a little plaque recognizing your year in appreciation of your service, dedication, and commitment to the Mashpee Public Schools. And we are making him an official member of Team Mashpee with the latest swag that came out.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Yes, right now.
Can I hold this?
Sure. Of course you have to hold the plaque. Got to hold the plaque. Major award.
Can we, can we get a picture of Andrew?
Stand in front of Zoom.
Oh, yeah, good.
Can we make this, yeah, can we put speaker on? Although you would be covering a little bit. Could you stand down a little, we'll get Dan up and down. I was going to say, if he's up there, it's like, how would it look if he comes?
Yeah.
Oh, that's adorable right there.
Excellent. And you're a big head.
You look awesome.
Oh, gosh.
Everyone should have received their invitation for the MSH graduation. Please note that you need to be there for 9:30 AM.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
All right. Next item of business is specifically an assigned or unfinished business, and the first item is the MMHS Mandarin Program update.
Yeah, so the School Committee has a memo that was sent to them on Sunday morning, which was May 5th. Later that afternoon, we did receive an email from the Mandarin teacher resigning at the end of school year 2324. But based on the memo that was sent to them in advance of that, and it was assuming that we had a part-time teacher, we were recommending that students, there's actually 10 of them, who want to take Mandarin III in school year 2425, we would make sure that they took, they had that opportunity. And then for the Mandarin IV students, there's also 10 of them who are interested in taking it in 2425, and we would accommodate them. We have confirmed that they are interested in continuing. The option that will be given is through the Virtual High School, which is offering those courses. So there's a lot of information on here, but moving forward, and then for school year 2526, we would continue to support the interests of those students, and then all the way through 2627, because there are some students who would be grade 12 then. We can answer any questions you might have.
Is the online program during the day when they're in school?
Yes, it would be scheduled as a class.
Would they still be able to take the stamp exam for Dersel?
Yes.
So it's, since it's an online class, is there a proctor or someone overseeing the class?
Yes, there would be a staff member assigned to that class. We don't know for sure who it is at this point. Hopefully, it would be someone in the Language, World Language Department.
So a teacher would be assigned to it?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure. I know I heard some feedback from one of the families that spoke, reiterating that the online classes are not ideal, so I'm not sure that if anyone else has heard that or received that email, but that was a communication I did receive. It was after the teacher had resigned, unfortunately, and I don't know that that parent knew the teacher had resigned.
I, I do think that last year there was an experience that some students had with physics online, which did not go well. We have had students successfully complete computer science courses online, so that it's not that it's AP Computer Science.
Yeah, but computer science is computers, so it's easier to do that online. When, at the last meeting, when you guys had brought this up, like I said, I was on the other side of the table, but there was a question on whether we were going to poll the younger grades, if they wanted to take Mandarin instead of French or Spanish. Was that done?
I don't think so, because I believe that the decision was made from administration that it wasn't going to be a program that we could support moving forward with the numbers, even if there was a wide range of 7th graders, because there is down below at the bottom, some information about prior years in terms of the students who took the exploratory and then, or the enrollment each of the years, including the exploratory, and that doesn't seem to translate. I think it's what Andrew said at the last meeting, you will capture students who are looking for the challenge of Mandarin. As a world language, it does not appeal to all students, because it is challenging.
I have another question about the online program. Is there opportunity in the online program to interact with other speakers, to practice the skills, because obviously, learning a language, you need to have practical experience with that language, so do these online courses, I'm not totally familiar with them, unfortunately. I mean, I tried to poke around a little to look into them, but I guess I just am wondering from your standpoint of programs specifically that you're looking at, does that involve a practical application and ability to speak with other Mandarin speakers?
Well, the Virtual High School courses do come with a teacher who is available through that program. It's not a totally computer-based experience.
But are there other students? Is there other students on there? So would it be our students from Mashpee along with students from other school districts?
No.
No. It would be our students from Mashpee going on and taking the course. They would be talking to each other in the room, because they'd be in the same room at the same time.
I also know there was an issue with our last Virtual High School about teacher availability to the students, because we have a rotating schedule and Virtual High School doesn't, I'm pretty sure. So do you think there would be an issue with that, or do you think we could get them to rotate with us?
We'd have to check into that a little bit more. I know Dr. Hanscom was the one who corresponded with the Virtual High School.
But that was not one of the questions I asked.
We did not ask that question.
So I can.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah.
I do have one question compared to virtual. Is that meaning that they're going to be on Zoom?
So Virtual High School has a lot of platforms. They usually use Blackboard or Canvas.
Okay.
And, but there is a video component. It may be Zoom, it may be Google Meet, it may be Microsoft Teams, I'm not sure. But it's a combination of synchronous and asynchronous stuff and videos that they're watching and then speaking and listening and so forth, so.
I just know that sometimes, including myself, Zoom can be a little unengaging for students.
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, the Zoom would be to interact with the teacher.
My other question, piggybacking off of Zoom, if I may. Technology, we know has been.
Uh-huh.
I guess, will they be, would, will there be in that classroom that these students would meet in to participate, would there be desktops potentially set up, or would they be working off their Chromebooks?
They would be work, yeah, desktops and the technology that's needed for success in a specific room.
That was going to be my question too, Kathy, thank you.
My only question, Mr. Chair, would be to the student representatives. You know, what would be your input on this? Obviously, Andrew, we heard from you last time, and we understand that you were in this program. Obviously, this is something, it's better than nothing, but I think it's something too that Eve can probably watch and kind of give us some updates and some feedback as we kind of roll this out to see if this is working or not.
I know a couple kids who were on the edge about doing Mandarin, so I'll definitely get input from them if they do it next year.
No, my, my main concern is, is, you know, as taking a language in high school, and we saw by the numbers that were presented with the data at the last meeting, French is falling down too. Their numbers are less and less. So is the next thing that we're going to do is, is we're going to, like Andrew said, Spanish is easy. It's the easiest course. If they don't want to challenge, they're going to take Spanish, because they have no choice. But eventually, is that going to be the only language that we're going to offer, is Spanish? Because then we're going to be at the bottom of the barrel.
I don't know where the direction of French will go. I do see down the road there being an opportunity to offer Portuguese.
Yes, okay.
Which would be something that I will not be here, but I see as something I would like to offer. And I do believe that Ms. Kett reached out to the students who have signed up for Mandarin III and the students have signed up for Mandarin IV for next year, letting them know of the virtual option, and the email that she sent us indicated they were all, at this point anyway, still pursue, still going to pursue Mandarin if it were through Virtual High School. But that could change, I'm sure.
Dan, do you have any questions?
I think one of the questions related to the technology, obviously, the consistency has not been, honestly, viewed as well. I guess, just coming back to what you would also felt at the last meeting, like, to the sense of, oh, I mean, right folks feel as though, you know, learning the alternative language, but they are also feeling as though that part of the meeting. I guess my comment is, in this model, whoever is, I would kind of talk, or you know, overseeing that space, hopefully, will be able to create that sense, even if they're not the primary Mandarin, Mandarin speaking, staff person, on business, clearly, that was a major driver for those students and families, and, you know, able to protect the question of, is there a future of being a student?
All right. Superintendent DeBoer, what other options did you explore? And what was the result of that exploration?
So the World Language Department Head, Tim Rumberger, did reach out to Barnstable. I think Barnstable and Monomoy have Mandarin programs to see if there was the possibility of us doing sort of a co-op program. At this time, it does not look, particularly for Barnstable, which is the closest one, did not look like it was going to work out, was the last feedback he gave me, but I will circle back again with him.
Thank you for working into that. Any other questions? It's not the, in my opinion, it's not the. It's not the, in my opinion, it's not the ideal solution, but it's the only viable solution that we have currently available. And, you know, we'd rather do something than to do nothing, to be able to support those students. And, you know, hopefully, we can encourage language awareness for the future classes, so that maybe there will be more interest in Mandarin or Portuguese or whatever languages are in demand. Anything else on this topic? All right. Next item is update on the superintendent search, our interim superintendent search.
So the posting went up internal only. It closed yesterday, and that's where we're at right now.
All right. And did we have any submissions?
We did. We had two, that I'm aware of. I haven't looked again today to make sure, but there were two.
There were two internal submissions?
Yes.
All right. And at this point, those have not been shared with the committee?
No, because they only came in kind of.
In the last second. Okay.
Well, I wouldn't say the last second, but people, I think, were taking their time to decide and talk to family members and figure out best course of action. And I think, you know, they were being smart about their, their choices. So I think it was just a matter of taking the time to reflect and think, so. But yes, we do have some. But again, I haven't checked to see if there are any more between them, but I have two that I know.
So I guess then the next step is determining how the committee wants to evaluate those Usually, there is a Q and A session, particularly if there are multiple candidates, in order for the committee to evaluate and gather whatever information or facts that they need in order to make a decision. Now, I don't believe, based on just where we are at this point and not being, not giving the potential candidates an opportunity to prepare, I think it would be challenging to do that at this meeting. I think it would, we would need to schedule a time and a place to do that. Does anyone have any other ideas?
I guess my thought is, if the two candidates are internal and we do know them, you know, is it necessary to go through the steps as if they're an unknown entity or an unknown individual, rather? I guess that's my thought is, I don't know. I don't know. I guess the Q and A just, I feel, seems a little, it's for the interim, it's not necessarily the permanent, it's just for the year. I guess those are my thoughts, are, we know, if we know the people who have applied and they're internal candidates, do we need to go through the whole process that we would go through for permanent superintendent? But that's.
Wouldn't it be best practice, though, to get a Q and A session with them? So we know where they stand on, on certain things?
I defer to the committee, as I just was always saying my thoughts on that. So obviously, if the committee wants it, I would go along with it, but I guess that was just my, my initial thought on it.
Well, I don't know if this is, but where it makes sense for there to be a smaller group or particularly for the chair to maybe settle over those candidates, but understand kind of what, where they're at and then report back to the committee for the decision.
I think it should be all of us, if it's going to be that group, personally. I think we all should participate, not just one of us, but that's, I think, because we all have different thoughts on things, so. I don't know that.
I would tend to agree with that too, but Brian, your thoughts?
No, I agree with the chairperson. I think that we need to schedule a special meeting or another meeting outside of this to kind of get, you know, everything in order, because we do have to make the decision sooner rather than later. And, you know, time's already ticking, so. I wouldn't mind. I mean, we have to put in the extra work, we have to call extra meetings, we have to, whatever it is, if it's Zoom, whatever, however we can.
Yeah, we're going to do, we're going to do.
Make ourselves available, but.
Yep.
So I believe the way the posting was, that candidates had to submit a letter of interest and a resume. So you have those two components. Also, you have knowing individuals as well.
I would like to ask, I don't want to volunteer Eve for more work, but would the student rep be allowed in those Q and As?
Yeah.
To give the student body some.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, member of the school committee, non-voting member.
I didn't know if it was an executive session.
No, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, okay.
An executive session for, is up to the discretion of the chair, but not in terms of negotiations that are just for clarification, indication, and no, but if you get, if it's negotiating, you can't. But if it's not negotiations, it's up to the discretion of the chair to invite student rep to executive session.
Thank you.
All right. So I think the next step would be to distribute the letters of interest to all of the members of the committee. And then if you will authorize the chair to schedule a meeting that works with the candidates and with the committee in the next week, I'll try that.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chair, to authorize you to schedule that meeting, to have a Q and A session with the candidates that have submitted applications.
I second.
Any discussion?
Can it just not be on a Tuesday next?
I was just, I just had a comment. At the last meeting, when we were talking about the superintendent search and the interim superintendent search, it was mentioned that a survey would be sent out to the stakeholders. Was that just for the superintendent and not for the interim superintendent? Okay, all right. And when does that plan on going out?
We haven't discussed that.
Okay. Because I thought we had, that you guys had said last time it was going to, you know, go out fairly quickly. And it hasn't, so. People, people are asking, just so you know.
We need to take step one here, which is.
Okay, which is this?
Which is this?
Okay.
And then that will buy us time to consider.
The question.
The questions and put together a survey. All right. So we have a motion.
And a second.
Give a second.
I'm sorry.
I did.
Kelly did.
Any further discussion? Harry, now, Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yeah.
And Brian?
Yes.
And all of us, too. So it's unanimous. All right. Please check your calendars and submit your availability for next week. And I'll reach out to the candidates. Okay?
So for clarity, you're having a meeting of the five of you to review what was submitted? Or you're having a meeting and inviting the candidates to a question and answer period of, with just the five of you? Or is it public?
It has to be public if it's the five of us.
Yeah, it'll be a public meeting. Okay. And, yeah, so it'll be.
So it's, you want Sherry to coordinate?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
So, so the executive that was at the end, isn't something to use for the five of you to discuss the two candidates this evening?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe so. Not based on this.
Mr. Chair, can I ask? So could we check with our council, school committee council, just to, like, understand in this process if there are points that should be to, whether it's with the interim or with the potential permanent, that should be executive session versus non-executive session? Because I do believe that there could be, you know, I guess I'm just curious, and I would like to request some clarification on that, just so we're all clear on it?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that's fine. It's, you know, my understanding, it does need to be public session, but let's make sure.
The, the question and answer part of it? Like, an interview has to be public?
The process as a whole, like, I would like just clarification of the process as a whole thing.
So.
As to what should be kept. Not that we're keeping things because of.
No, no.
But what discussion, like, what is the line on discussion?
Okay.
Because I feel.
So we're going to get.
I just want to make sure that those candidates are able to openly talk.
Yeah.
And I worry, my concern is in an open session, they may not.
Speak.
Feel as comfortable to, I mean, I'm assuming they would, but I guess I'm just trying to look out for the best interest of all.
Yes, yeah.
No, it's about a question, so let's find out from our council. I do know in past practice, particularly with the superintendent, that is, in my understanding, is required that those have to be held in public session. But to the extent in regard with an interim, I think that may be to the discretion of the committee, but I think personally, from a transparency perspective.
Oh, no, I agree.
That we would want that to be a public session, but we will reach out, I'll have the superintendent reach out to our council and get clarification on that.
I believe that last meeting, when we talked to the chair of the Mass Association of School Committees, I believe he had some insight on that. So I don't remember what he said, but I would recommend going back and watching the video, because I think he had some valuable insight.
Yeah, he did talk, yeah, he did talk a lot about that, you're right.
But we will default or defer to our legal counsel.
So we're going to all, all five members and Eve are going to be getting the letters of interest and the resume, so we can review one before the next meeting?
That's great.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Next item was the preliminary data on the school committee self-evaluation for school year 23-24. I believe everyone got an email.
Right, so, I mean, we, I do have, everyone did complete the first survey, so thank you, including Andrew. So that's good data as well. But the survey that needed to match last year's set of questions, based on the workshop that Kathy attended to, attended, was not the survey. So it's been reissued and members have until June 1st to respond. And then June 6th, we will, actually, we'll be able to share all both, but June 6th. So my apologies for not using the right set of questions.
Thanks, good quick question. Is Kelly going to be filling that out? Because it's okay if she does.
Yeah, no, she is.
Okay.
And she did this last one, too.
Okay.
So, yes.
I don't knows.
That's fine.
So I figured I'd sit here first and then maybe I'll know a little bit more.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, no, and evaluating the data, we know the outliers, what they might be.
Yeah, no, it's good, yeah. So thank you all for doing the first survey.
Well, did Matt complete the first survey?
Actually, no, I think it was, it's Kelly. Matt did not.
Matt did not, okay. I didn't know if he did before.
He, he could have, was the intent, but no.
Okay, all right. Any questions on that? So we'll be carrying that to June 5th.
Yeah.
Under new business, we've got the school committee and the Mashpee-Wapinac Tribal Council annual check-in meeting on July 10th at 5:30 at the Mashpee-Wapinac Tribal Government Center. Please make sure you have that on your calendar. Any questions on that? All right. Next item is the summer retreat. So it's scheduled for August 7th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Do we have a location for that?
We do not.
Okay, so location DVD.
I have gotten word that I will be away for that day, but I believe that hopefully other members of the senior advisory committee will be there.
Okay.
Are we doing, did we say we were doing the whole student advisory committee or just the chair? Because last year, we only did the chair.
I thought we were trying to do the, an early part of a meeting to include them all.
That's right, yep.
Yes.
I thought that's what it was.
So more, more to come on that. And then farther out on your calendar, just a reminder that there's the Mass, Mass Joint Conference in Hyannis. That's November 6th through 9th. I believe that's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I believe?
Yes, typically, that's what it is, but I'm just checking.
So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Mr. Chair, just a question on that. I know previously Kathy had sent us some of the resolutions that were going to expire for us to look at, to see if we had any interest in some of them, so we could place that on future agenda item. One of the resolutions that I had looked at, I was interested in, was the mascot issue in the mascot bill. I think that Mashpee can really lead the front, considering we just changed our town seal, I mean, a lot of the work that we do do. So that was one of the resolutions I did see that is getting ready to expire, so.
If, yeah, if that is placed, we do have a timeframe on when we can adopt a resolution that is up for expiration or that is expiring. So if that's something that our school committee would like to put forth as sponsors of, there is a time limit, and I can look into that. I think this week, actually, I think MASC Division 9 or 10, I think 9, did a webinar on how to put forth resolutions. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend it, but I know, you know, we can definitely pick it up if that's something we want. So I don't, we might want to move on that a little sooner rather than later, because MASC won't send out the resolutions until August or September for consideration. But I know there's a deadline to submit if we want to sponsor one.
We probably need to find out what the deadline is. Kathy, if you could.
Sure.
Check into that and let the committee know. We would appreciate that. Is there any others that are expiring that people had interest in?
There's a list. I can reach out to Jason or Stephanie, who are the chairs of the policy or the resolutions subcommittee, and see if there's any other, you know, if we can get a list of what is expiring. And that information is easily available to us through our MASC connections.
Okay, why don't we do that, particularly since Kelly's news? If you could send that out to everyone on the committee? All right. Are there any other items that need to be brought forward to the committee at this So on our agenda, we had scheduled an executive session. I don't believe that that is necessary based upon our earlier discussion. So if there's nothing else, we will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, plus Janice.